Ms. Kiesa, are you ready? Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting of the North Rock Planning Commission to order, please. Ms. Kiesa, would you please call the roll?
Banks, Blasko.
Here.
Chambers.
Present.
Dietz.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
Wallace.
Here.
White.
Here.
Chairman Clifton.
Thank you, Ms. Kiesa. If you would, please turn your cellphones off. And if you're going to be speaking, please come to the microphone and give us your name for the record, please. If you're here for rezoning property from C3 to C4 to allow for a commercial development at 7521 Young Road, that has been postponed. It will not be heard today. If you're here for that, you may be excused, or we would love for you to stay with us. We have a presentation from the city engineer, and with the commission's approval, we will move that to the end of the meeting. You have been submitted a copy of the minutes from our previous meetings. Are there any additions or corrections to that?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to be approved as submitted. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item is our Development Review Committee, Mr. Don Chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Development Review Committee has considered items D-2018-40, Rockwater Village, Phase III, Flumery Class, Resilient Residential Subdivision of Rockwater Boulevard. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through 10 and subsections, and elected not to ask for a waiver of sidewalks, so there'll be sidewalks instructed on both sides of all streets. And with that, the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to be approved as submitted. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments, many of the commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
That concludes the report from the Development Review Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. We'll move right into our public hearing. First case is conditional use case number 2018-8 to allow a car lot in a C4 zone located at 1415 West 36th Street in North Little Rock. Is the applicant here?
Chairman Clifton. This notice hasn't been done properly for this one, so we're postponing it until next month.
Okay. If you're here for that application on a car lot on West 36th Street, it is being postponed until next month. Thank you. Next item is item number two, number 2018-10, to allow a pawn shop in a C3 zone located at 7117 JFK Boulevard in North Little Rock. Is the applicant here?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Please go to the microphone and give us your name for the record, please.
My name's Douglas Braswell.
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
I have some pictures that I'd like to distribute to the more of the
Yes, sir.
Thank you all for the opportunity to come before you today. As I said, my name's Douglas Braswell, and I'm the owner of Braswell &amp; Son Pawnbrokers. We've been operating in central Arkansas for about 39 years and have four locations. I've been with the company for 25 years. And when I started with the company, Braswell &amp; Son was a traditional pawn shop, dealing in just about anything of value, from firearms to lawn tools and jewelry, and just about anything you can think of. But during my tenure with the company, we gradually moved away from this stereotypical pawn shop model to something that is most often confused with a jewelry store today. Braswell &amp; Son is well-known in the community for four primary reasons, the first of which is it's a great place to go to meet short-term financial needs. We've helped folks with amounts from $100 to $30,000. We've helped small businessmen meet payroll, single moms, pay unexpectedly high utility bills. All of our transactions take place in private rooms to respect the privacy and the circumstances of each of our customers. The second thing that Braswell &amp; Son is known for is a great place to go for quality goods at great prices. Approximately 85% of our sales come from jewelry and vintage luxury handbags. And I believe that we're the number-one seller of Louis Vuitton handbags in the state. To sell these type of luxury goods, a beautiful store is required. And as I said, the inside of our stores resembles a jewelry store. Third thing we're known for is a provider of great jobs. Braswell &amp; Son has been recognized in each of the last three years as the best place to work by Arkansas business. Providing a great place to work with excellent pay and benefits is one of the things of which I'm most proud. And finally, community service. Braswell &amp; Son has an active partnership with nonprofits in the communities in which we operate. The Call of Plaski County, the Faulkner County Boys and Girls Club, and Exodus Project are three with whom we've had long-term relationships. But there are many others, including in recent years donating musical instruments to one of the Lakewood schools. We even allow each of our employees to volunteer one day per quarter and receive full pay for their time volunteering. In 2017, Braswell &amp; Son was honored by the National Pawnbrokers Association for its outstanding community service. So we are, I am, super excited about the opportunity to be a part of the North Little Rock community and would appreciate your support for our proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. Any comments from any commissioner, Mr. Chambers?
Let them go first.
Mr. White?
For the people that are in the audience, you think we could give them?
I donated mine to Sean if he wants to pass it out.
I have an extra here that I can leave at the podium or can be distributed.
People in the audience that may be here for or against it, if they could see this, that change their mind?
And, Tim, there's a couple more up here. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak against this application at this time?
Good afternoon. My name's Tom Brooks, and I'm a member of the
Are you the spokesman for the group, or are you?
I think that I am.
Okay, very good.
I asked the others, and I guess they thought, you know, I would use up the whole three minutes and they wouldn't have to speak.
Very good. Go right ahead.
But I live in Sherwood. I actually served on the planning commission in Sherwood for a number of years in the city council. In fact, Sherwood just a couple of months ago moved the zoning of all pawn shops to a C4 class. But I want to say before I begin why I opposed to it, that Mr. Braswell's facilities are quite beautiful, quite outstanding, and I credit him for that. And our parish, who opposes the pawn shop being located there, certainly not opposed to pawn shops. Pawn shops become a mechanism for many people to raise money that don't have other venues to raise money. But we don't think that the place for it is right across the street from the rectory, the place where ministers, where our ministers live, or across from our school. We have a little over 1,000 families in our parish, which is like 3,000 people if Catholics have more than Protestants, so we'll say everybody has full two. So 3,000 people in the parish and a school with 400. And our school is an open campus, open from the standpoint of the school's locked to get in, but the playground's not secure in any way. And I know that even though the items that Mr. Braswell or petitioner's requested are true, and some of his sources show that, the people who come to pawn items, the definition of pawn is not necessarily a positive thing. It's normally a last-resort thing. If I were to ask the rhetorical question, which of you have ever been in a pawn shop as a seller, I doubt very few of you would indicate that you had, because you have other means by which to raise money. And we are concerned about the dynamics of the people who would transition, the transitory people who would petition, who would come into the pawn shop, not the items that are sold. We'll concede the fact that his pawn shop's one of the best. But if you say, "Well, it's not the same kind of pawn shop," it's like saying, "Well, it's not the same kind of insurance agent." "Well, it's not the same kind of car lot." "Well, it's still a car lot, still an insurance agent, still a pawn shop." But we'd like for you to seriously consider denying the request, because it's just not in a proper location, not in, you know, across the street from a school. I don't know that I've ever seen a pawn shop across the street from the school. Somebody will probably say, "Oh, yeah, there's one here and here and here," but I've never seen one. I think traditionally they've all, they should be allowed in a city, and we have many of them in Sherwood, you have many in North Little Rock, but not across the street from school and the rectory. And that's essentially it. Now, other people will echo that, our parish manager's here, president of our parish council's here, but I think they'll say essentially the same thing.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you for your time. I've been glad to answer your questions if
Mr. Foster?
Mr. Brooks, let me ask you this. I understand what you want to hear us saying, and I want to understand this real well, because I know it's important to a lot of folks out here. But, you know, maybe you can help me answer this question. Do you see any difference? You said something about the clientele, and that's what I understood. You say that patronize a pawn shop. Do you see that clientele being any different than those folks that use the goodwill on the other side of the parking lot?
Only to the standpoint of the goodwill involved in the same thing our church is and many churches are, where they want to help the needy and the given things. Typically a person, and that's a good question, by the way, typically the people who would approach a pawn shop, and I'm a contractor by trade, and many of the people who work for me use pawn shops, they can't get a loan from me, or they can't get a loan from a bank. And so they take what they have and they lend it for a fee for a period of time. Many of them never pick those items up. And so I think there is a distinct difference between the two, but I understand the similarity. I mean, one, of course, like the goodwill that's in that area, are helping people that they're giving. You've given to the goodwill, or my wife has, let's say, or I have, and then people pick up those items. And it's just highly transitory. And I think there is a difference between the two, but I
I don't see a big difference, because, you know, you were talking about the actual clientele being the lesser
Not the ones that
out there, and that's what impression I'm getting from you, and I don't see any difference. And I see this being an opportunity for this pawn shop to help folks, just like you said, that maybe it's a last resort. Well, they need last resorts, you know. I know your churches and all our churches around town help those folks. And I think it's an opportunity for this to provide that. I mean, it looks like to me, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is, it looks like me, this is kind of another phase of like a consignment store, you know, or a refurbish store. You know, I always wonder why they call them, because I've used the pawn shop out on Markham, which is a nice, very nice store.
It is. I concede that.
And I've seen one on Baseline. I mean, yeah, on Baseline. It's, well, you know, Baseline's pretty rundown, but their store, Baseline's one of the nicest stores in the entire street. You know, the landscaping's kept up well, it's manicured, and I don't see a lot of, like you said, the kind of people you may not want to see in that area. So I'm having a hard time understanding the opposition to this business that we want here in the city of North Little Rock.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this subject, on this application?
For or against?
We'll speak against right now.
I'm Jenna Starky, and I'm not here for this reason. I'm here for another reason. But to go back to what Mr.?
Foster.
Foster said?
Yes.
I understand, everything he said was great, and it sounds great, and somebody could get a great deal. But I wonder how many, I know someone, he asked how many people had gone to a pawn shop to buy something. Well, what I'd like to know is how many people in this room have things stolen from you that was sold to a pawn shop? That's the problem that I would have with that, and I believe that's what he's talking about when he's talking about the type of people that may go there. I know, I know some people right here that have had a whole warehouse of stuff stolen and taken to a pawn shop and sold. I'm not going to say that that's what Mr. Braswell does, because it appears that he just does jewelry, but we all know that he does more than jewelry. So that's just from somebody sitting here that wasn't even here for this reason. I just wanted to help this kind man that said what he said about the church, because I understand that. But I understand with the opiate problem that we've got right now, we've got so many people that are trying to get money any way they can, and they're stealing from everyone they can, and the first place they go is a pawn shop to get their money. That's all I have to say.
I think you're exactly right. You know, if you were classifying this as a traditional or typical pawn shop, but I think what Mr. Braswell is trying to express to us here is that's not his
I understand what he'd say. I'd like for him to
Address, address that issue.
I'd like for him to address the situation. Do they have any kind of tools, anything that you may have had stolen, a lawnmower, a bicycle, a tiller, a, anything like that, a boat, anything like that that could have been stolen that he may have taken? And it may not be exhibited in this beautiful room, but it's probably someplace. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Someone like to speak on the application?
In favor of?
Greg Mueller with the Ashley Group, and we're the landlord for the shopping center. And just wanted to say that we obviously were in favor of it. We didn't enter into this lease with Mr. Braswell lightly. You know, we want to maintain the integrity of the shopping center, and so we explored, pretty in-depth, Mr. Braswell and his operation, went and visited ourselves, visited his employees, and we felt like it was a quality operation. We kind of started on this lease and put some parameters in there that excluded, you know, the sale of guns, which is kind of where this body was at with this measure about four years ago. I think he had made application back in April of 2014 to go on another building on the other side of JFK, and there were other extenuating circumstances that they did not go there. But it was looked at by this body back at that time. And one of the conditions that y'all put on it was no guns. And so we started there on our lease with no guns, no outside display of any merchandise, so that it doesn't look like a typical pawn shop that has merchandise displayed around the parking lot. And so we put some parameters on it that are written into the lease, as well as any other conditions that might be placed upon it by this body. But obviously, we're in favor of it. We think it's a quality operation. We think it will add to the shopping center. We'd encourage you to vote for it. Thank you.
Okay, yes.
I will take one question. Your lease excludes the sale of guns. Can a person come in and sell a gun that could be taken to another location and sold? So it wouldn't be sold here, but it could be accepted here. Does your lease exclude that, or just the sale of the gun?
It excludes the sale of guns. We did not
I could go there and pawn a gun, but I couldn't buy it back from there, for example.
Well, I don't know. That would be a fairly technical interpretation. I'd say that we probably excluded both, but it's not explicit in the lease.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Foster?
Let me ask one other question. Now, I know the folks that used to run Stanley Jeweler up in Park Hill, and my wife and I have, you know, traded, you know, jewelry up there, because we had some vintage jewelry that was handed down from, you know, generations. And, you know, we didn't have any value for it, and our kids, you know, they didn't want it. So we did some trading there, and basically, you know, we sold it, and then we bought some other jewelry from them. What is the difference that, Sean, what's the difference that's going to go? How was that, how was that area, was that a special use for them or conditional use for that?
Stanley Jewelers?
Yeah.
They've been there so long. It was before, before that point, and it was probably about 12 years ago, we made conditional, or made pawn shops a conditional use. So they were allowed by right at that point in time when they opened up.
Did we ever have any neighborhood opposition to that activity?
Not, I'm not aware of any other than the one four years ago that was talked about.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak on this? Yes, ma'am.
Hello. My name's Melanie Hoggard. I'm a resident of North Little Rock. I've lived here 30 years. I own two businesses in North Little Rock, and I am also a member of Immaculate Conception Catholic Church. I am here to speak on behalf of Braswell &amp; Son for many reasons. And please, I want everyone in this room to know that I have the utmost respect and love for my church, but I also know Mr. Braswell's operation fairly well. I've known them for many years, and it is just not at all what most people think of when they think pawn shop. You know, you've all already heard that quite a bit today, but they're a family-owned business. You know, they've been recognized as one of the best places to work in Arkansas. They truly treat their staff as family. And to answer another question earlier, many years ago, when I was single, didn't have any money, I have been to a pawn shop and been on the other side of it for a loan. I had a ring my dad gave me for my 21st birthday that I used on multiple occasions to help me get by. I would have loved the opportunity to have a place that was this professional, privacy, because it wasn't the, you know, I wasn't super proud of that, that I was in that position, but it helped me get by, and it helped me to meet the needs that I had at that time. So to have a business like this in our city and our community that can help those individuals who need help to get by and need that short-term loan, but also provide an upscale shopping venue for all of us, for the residents of our community, I think is a huge asset to our city and to the community. You know, I don't know who all their customers are that come in there, but I would only assume and think that the things that they sell are things that people pawned and that they took in. So it's jewelry, it's designer handbags. You know, I recently bought some electronics from them, setting up a training room. I just, I could go on and on, but I just believe that it would truly be an asset to our city and to our community, and I don't feel like it would be a threat to anyone in the immediate neighborhood.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hoggard. Mr. Chambers?
I just have a tough time with the vocabulary that basically equates what, for all practical purposes, a loan and resale shop to a place that houses sexual predators. That's kind of the language I'm hearing, is that, you know, that we shouldn't have this here because it's dangerous for our children. I've been on the Immaculate Conception campus, and the playground is well over 1,000 feet away from this building. So it's not like you can stand out the front door and see the playground. In addition, I've always said, and I'm probably on record in some minutes somewhere, that a pawn shop is, they should be all over the city, not just in Ward Two, or, you know, just in Ward Four, or, you know, they should be all over the city and allowed wherever they appropriately go. This seems like a very good fit, very good retail fit. So from all practical purposes, a very nice business. I have one question for the applicant, though. They raised questions regarding, let's just say, the character of the person that comes in to give you an item for resale, loan or resale. And do you, I'm not saying you have magical powers, but how do you screen the persons? I mean, if someone comes in and says, "I want to sell you 300 Louis Vuitton handbags," surely that raises a question, okay? Particularly if it says, you know, Grandma Rita Smith inside. I would think that would raise a question, too, if their name is Jones. So do you have a method of screening the persons that come in? Are you ever suspicious of someone that happens to want to sell you a lawnmower, a Vuitton handbag, and a chainsaw? I mean, how do you do that?
Right. And I think that, you know, over the years, we have developed some, what we call qualifying customers. So each customer is qualified. So if someone comes in in one of the situations that you've described, then that's not someone that we do business with. You know, every item that comes in is reported to law enforcement electronically at midnight. And law enforcement has a, all the descriptive information that comes off the driver's license, as well as record and serial numbers and pictures even of items that have been pawned, which is a huge deterrent to potential thieves to do business. So, you know, beyond the fact that it's not profitable and it's against the law, you know, as a policy, we do not buy stolen merchandise, and we lose if it were to ever happen. And so, so I guess to answer your question, yes, we have, we have policies in place to prevent that kind of thing from happening. And, you know, one thing that had come up earlier was about things being pawned, meaning they never come back for them. And that's a common misconception about the industry. But our experience is that almost 80% of the people who bring an item in subsequently pick it up, similar to the experience that Ms. Hoggard had. A person has an item, and they view that in some ways as a credit card. And they know that I can get $500 on my Louis Vuitton handbag anytime I need it. And so if I lose it, I've lost access to $500 whenever I need it. So again, a large percentage of customers ultimately come back and redeem their item. It's a very small amount they don't, which is, again, surprising to most people.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Braswell. Mr. White?
I call for question.
Question has been called and seconded on the application. Please call the roll.
Banks?
Yes.
Blasko?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Your application did pass. See Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you where you would proceed next.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for coming and voicing your opinion on this, and we believe that it will make a good addition to that area. Thank you so much. Next item of business is special use case number 2018-10. Ms. Harris?
Banks. Yeah, Banks. Mr. Banks.
I'm sorry. I'm Yes, sir, Mr. Banks. Go ahead.
I am a part-owner of this property, so I'd like to let the record show that I was recruited from voting on this item here.
This item number three?
Yes.
Okay, let the record show that. If you were here for that case and you'd like to be excused, you may be. We would love for you to stay with us if you'd like. Thank you. Special use case number 2018-10 to allow a funeral home with 22 parking spaces in a C4 zone at 1901 East Broadway. Is the applicant here? Yes, please come up.
Good evening. Venetta Peaster?
Pardon?
Venetta Peaster.
Yes, ma'am. Have you been furnished a copy of staff conditions to be considered?
Yes, sir.
And do you agree with those recommendations?
Yes, sir.
Conditions? Mr. Spencer, has there been any opposition to this application?
We have not received any calls or emails on it.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Yes, sir. Please come up and give us your name. Ms. Peaster, let her, let him come up, please.
My name is Guy Hutslur, and I just have a couple of questions and a comment.
Yes, sir.
First off, I don't know why you would want another funeral home on East Broadway. We seem to have an abundance of them already up Broadway and Washington Avenue. And my second point is parking. They want 22 spaces. Well, I've looked at that place, and I can see maybe a dozen parking places. I don't know how they're going to get 22. And at a funeral, 22, I mean, you're going to see that few cars at maybe my funeral, but most of them you're going to see 50. And 50 cars in that congested little area is going to be total chaos. And my third, my third question is, are you now or in the future planning on doing cremations?
Would you address the cremations?
At no time will cremations nor embalming be on the premises. All of that is contracted out. And with your questioning about the funeral homes, I see funeral homes just like I see churches and like I see liquor stores. You are offered a choice. And with me being a widow, with both parents deceased, for me to be a part of anyone's transitions or a difficult time like that is humbling to me, sir. It would not be where I would take advantage of anyone. And your questioning is, with the parking, we will do everything in our power to meet the city of North Little Rock, for at arms of peace, we always cherish it and appreciate the opportunity to own licenseings, whether it's driver's license, whether it's your CDL, whether it's your funeral director's license, or your establishment license. We will do everything in our power to meet those needs. If not, where we cannot, then we would have the opportunity to take it to a church, which has allowed us to be on their list for family hours and funerals.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak on this application? Mr. White?
Can they get twenty-two spaces in there?
Yes, the applicant has met with the city engineer, and we've got, there's a drawing in there, but that, that was the max we've been working with. We've also been working with the fire marshal to determine how many people could be in the building, and that's what determined how many parking spots.
Okay. Any other comments made to commissioners on the application? Please call the roll.
Blasko?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Your application did pass. Get with Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you what your next procedure would be. And please, Kisha, did I mention to...
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Item number four, special use case number twenty-eighteen dash eleven to allow a tire store in a C-three zone located at twenty-three, twenty-four Pike Avenue.
Mr., Mr. Chairman?
My name is Ahmed Alshoula.
I'm sorry, again?
My name is Ahmed.
Ahmed?
Yes.
Yes, sir. You have met with the design review committee. Have you been furnished a, a list of the recommendations that they made?
Means like another business before, or some else?
No, this list. When you came to the other committee meeting you came to before?
Okay.
You were given a list?
Mr. Chairman, the fire marshal asked me to hand these out to you. It's the rules on fire, on a tire store. So the last item in your conditions, you know, basically says, or the second to last meet all city requirements?
The one you gave me the last time, right?
It would be, yeah.
Okay.
Just for you guys' information, he knows about them, but fire marshal wanted to make sure you guys knew what exactly all conditions they require.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Chambers?
Yes, I am.
You have, and you agree with those?
Yes.
Conditions?
Yes.
out during the day's time?
Means what, the policy, the whole business? How much I spill or something like this? About like thirty thousand, something like this?
I, I'm not understanding what you're saying.
Means like how much I spill money for the business?
Oh, no. The tires that you would take off of a vehicle today?
Okay, yeah.
And put other tires on, and they leave?
Okay.
What do you do with the tires that you take off?
The old one, I have a DQ number. I play with the DQ number for the sitting, like a company come and take them out, and the DQ would charge me like two dollars for each one.
How often does that company come and get them?
Every month.
Pardon me?
Every month.
Every month?
Yes.
So you store these tires at a location?
Inside.
And they come once a month and get them?
Yes.
Okay, I have not seen this, Mr. Spencer. I'm assuming that you have. Does it tell us in here anywhere about the procedure and how long these tires can be stored? I think other tire, and the reason my question for that is other tire stores that we've talked about have not been stored there that long.
No, sometimes we move them every week. If, if I move them myself to outside the town, to the company over there, I move them every week. Under a week, I move them over there. But if I, if the company come and take them to the shop, just come in every month.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
The, the ordinance says one hundred tires per square feet. That includes used tires and new tires. So it would not be to his advantage to keep so many old tires there, because that's going, he, he can't have as many as new ones. So it would be, you know, I would guess, after he gets a truckload, he's going to call the guy and they come pick it up.
Mr. White?
Are you going to be selling used tires as well?
The best I sell in my shops is the new tires and new wells. You know, new tires, the first one.
Okay, so you're not going to sell...
But sometimes, sometimes, like some customer, he have a tires, used one, but it's still good tires. Okay, we not throw them away, because I sell them to somebody who need them or somebody have any problem, you know?
Okay. I guess, I guess my concern is, is since I've been on this, we've approved two, and they were both on JFK. One of them is still there and, and just follows the rules a hundred percent. You never see a tire outside. And the other one down the street that's not in business anymore was just, it's across from IC, was just horrible. So at night, these tires are going to be inside?
Yes.
The building always?
Yes.
Okay.
They have like a big inside, big place inside, for the used one or the new one, or the bad tire.
And that, that's my main concern.
If, if, if any tires outside, this cover, we cover them, you know?
Yeah, like Goodyear does and everybody else does. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other comments from anyone in the audience on this application?
I have one other question. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, Ms. White?
He was doing a detail shop first, before the tires. Didn't it say something like that?
I do.
He wasn't doing it. It said the conditional use for an auto detail shop was approved in two thousand... Was he in... Okay, that's what I want to know. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Dustin Frey, I'm the deputy fire marshal for the city. The reason why I wanted you guys to have the paperwork, so you could understand the ordinance, and one of the problems that we're coming up with the tire shops, not that I'm for or against them having this shop there, I just wanted to make sure that the, the owner of the business understands what the rules are, so we are proactive and don't create a problem instead of addressing a problem later on. Things that we're finding is people that are taking these tires when they get over their capacity to keep from getting a ticket, we're finding the tires in ditches, we're finding them behind businesses, we're finding them just on the outside of town where, before you come into North Little Rock, you see tires laying up down the side of the road. So there is a process through the tire service company where they actually come to your property and pick those up. Once a month, maybe sufficient, if they go, once they get the hundred, what, Mr. Spencer, was it a hundred per, how many square feet?
One hundred tires per fifteen hundred square feet.
Okay, so one, if they see theirself getting there, they just need to, he just needs to understand that he needs to have those tires disposed of properly and then keep his receipt on file showing that they did go to the tire service place to be disposed of properly, because if he doesn't have that receipt, we don't have any way of tracing where those tires end up at, and they become a nuisance. Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Chambers?
Did you have an opportunity to explain the regulations to Mr. Ahmed?
I have not. This is the first, first time I've spoken on it myself.
Thank you.
Mr. Reavis?
The fire marshal was at the designer, or John was at the fire, the design review committee and went over all that with the applicant.
Okay. All right, very good.
Thank you.
Any other comments made to commissioners on the application? Please call the roll.
Banks?
Wait, excuse me, before we call for the, does the number thirteen in the conditions to be considered, that should comply with the ordinance? Mr. Spencer?
Correct, yes. So that, that gives us, if any of the fire marshal or planning finds, he's, you know, he might get a warning the first time, but the second time, we have the authority to have electricity turned off if, if he doesn't come into compliance.
Okay, on the application, please call the roll.
Banks?
Yes.
Blasko?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Harris? I mean, I'm sorry, Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes, your application did pass. Forget Mr. Spencer, he can tell you what to do. Thank you. Next item of business is rezone case number twenty-eighteen dash nine to rezone from R3 to APUD to allow for custom setbacks at properties located at fifteen-sixteen Parker Street in North Little Rock. Yes, sir.
My name is Mike Marler.
Fifteen-sixteen on nine.
On the application, it's fifteen-eighteen. Mike Marler, I represent the, the applicant on this, and I was at the subdivision committee meeting, and the applicant agreed to all of this stipulations in the preliminary review.
Has there been any opposition to this, Mr. Spencer?
We've received inquiries, but no one has come out and said, I haven't heard anything, but we have had a couple of calls to say what's going on.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this application? Okay, on the application, please call the roll.
Banks?
Yes.
Blasko?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Your application did pass. See Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you what to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number six on our agenda is twenty-eighteen dash ten to rezone property from R1 and R3 to an R0 to allow for a zero lot line residential subdivision located at the northeast corner of Division Street and West Fifty-second. Is the applicant here? My name is Butch Penny, and this is Mr. JM Kreutz. He's my partner in this business. Mr. Penny, you have been to the subdivision committee?
Has not.
No.
That'd be the next step, so he's wanting to get approval for a rezoning, and then he, that gets approved, then hire an engineer to do the drawings.
Okay. Have you received any calls on this application?
There was a couple of calls against, and they were just, some of them were more inquiry, but they, they were against more, you know, houses in their backyard.
So if this passes today, then it would come a complete review for the subdivision committee?
Correct. It would have to go to city council, get approval.
Yes.
An official approval, and then sometime in the next couple of months, I would guess, he'd come in for a plat for a neighborhood.
Okay. Okay, anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this application? Any comments made to commissioners? Come up and give us your...
I live at thirteen-thirteen Cody Place. The property in question is right behind my property. I have a problem with the zero lot line, for one thing. As I understand it, they could build right on their property line. Is that correct?
Mr. Chambers?
Yes, ma'am. Normally, a zero lot line type development, the, the residence is on butts or is contiguous to one lot line. Sometimes a lot line goes between the two houses so that they're touching. Think of it as a duplex with a lot line down the middle, but they don't line up and all touch, just, you might have a duplex, you may have houses that, that but the left-hand property line all the way down the street. It gives them more density, and it gives them more room, rather than having two side yards you cannot use, it gives you one large side yard. I'm just trying to explain it. I'm neither for nor against it, I'm just trying to explain it.
I haven't seen a map yet.
We haven't either.
To, to see exactly where this property is located. I used to draw maps.
There you go.
I'm really confused about their, their weights written up.
I used to work there.
Yep.
This is the proposal that the applicant submitted, right here. Um, Division Street, this West Fifty, proposed West Fifty-second. Here's a zoning map right here.
Yeah.
So you can see here, this is all R1, and this is R3, so, um...
Just a second. I've already had to call on the property that is located behind us. They were out clearing the property without any permits, and I called to ask to see what was going on, called the mayor's office, and he directed me to the engineering department, and they ended up sending an inspector out. And so I'm kind of concerned about how these people do business, if they don't do it correctly the first time, or are they going to do it correctly from here on?
Well, and if they submit a development plan, it will be approved here and approved through the commission, and then at that point in time, then the inspections will come and be adhered to every step of the way.
I have one other question. I understand that according to the plot plan, they're supposed to have a six-hundred-square-foot or larger dwelling, or is that correct?
Again, we're not at that point yet.
Okay.
So, so they're, they're, they're going to present something once this gets approved. So, so they haven't gone to the point of yet of developing the lot sizes and that kind of information yet. This is just step one. So normally, you wouldn't spend time with an engineer to develop a larger, larger drawing and then come here and get voted down, so they would have spent money that, on something not yet. So there, no one's at that point yet to do that, but you're, when it comes before, you know, you're welcome to check and, you know, look at the drawing.
Okay. Well, we're concerned about our... We live in a cul-de-sac, and we all have similar homes, and we have had habitat homes come in that are lesser size, lesser value, and we're getting concerned that they're trying to set some kind of precedent of lowering the value of our own homes that we spent a lot of time and effort to maintain, and...
Well, it's, it appears that it will be a development for new homes. Okay?
It's going to be homes, it's not going to be duplexes or...
It's going to be single-family residence, is what my understanding at this point Thank you, Ms. Montgomery.
Thank you.
Someone else would like to speak on the application? Yes, sir.
My name is Fred Trustee. I live at eleven-eleven West Fifty-first Street, right around the corner from this development. I'm favor of the property being developed. I'm not a favor... I'm not a favor of the R0 where they can build a home minimum of six hundred foot on a minimum four thousand square foot lot. I don't like the ideal of having houses butted up against the property line. What this is going to do to our neighborhood is increase the traffic, increase the noise, and it's going to degrade my property value and everybody else's property around it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
My name is Ron Curreton. I live on Fifty First Street Two. It borders Parker turns, Beach First turns into Parker and it borders property right there. I'm not against progress. I'm just against little bitty tiny homes. Bigger homes is what we need. Then, well, you do the math. A twenty by twenty foot home is four hundred feet. Thirty by thirty is nine hundred feet. Forty by forty is sixteen hundred feet home. You're talking about a six hundred foot home. Well, third of this room is about six hundred feet. I mean, that's not a very big home. Can we not have bigger homes in the area? I'm not against progress, just how many of these little tiny homes is he trying to build in there, cram them in? Can we not have fewer of those and bigger ones of these other ones? That's what I'm after.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Curreton. Mr. White?
Mr. Penny?
Yes, sir.
I'm curious about two things, and I know I'm getting the cart in front of the horse. But how many homes do you think you're going to put in there?
Right now, all we're going to do is put in the, the street across from Fifty First, uh, Fifty Second, excuse me, and come up Division and pave all that, put the curbs and gutters in, meet all city standards. We're not going to be building any six hundred square foot homes. These homes are going to be right around twelve hundred feet, thousand square feet in that area.
And then my second question is, on these homes, are they going to have a garage, a carport, or are they going to park on, try to park on the street?
We're going to try to have most of them with garage because nearly everybody wants a garage. We're going to have some double car garages. The, what this, to answer this lady's question, when we build a zero lot line, we build on one line, we still have approximately the same distance over to the next house. And we have to meet the front yard setbacks and the backyard setbacks, just like anybody else. And Mr. Kreutz and I have both built zero lot line subdivisions before. And I've been building since I was about ten years old and we're real old, so we've had a little experience. Mr. White?
And Sean, on this, can that be a requirement that they have to have a garage? Because what we don't want is all of a sudden, just like in several places in our city now, there's no place to park, so they park on the street. Drives me crazy. You can't get through. Is, is there during the, the, the meeting afterwards, the subdivision meeting, can that be a requirement or can that not be?
We cannot put conditions on a rezoning. But, and just a sort of reminder, the, the PUD on near the river, Rockwater, you know, the lots are smaller than what possibly he's going to propose. And there, you know, his minimum to sell that is, you know, like two hundred and fifty thousand for, you know, a house on a real small lot. So it's being done right now and it's, and it's, and, you know, again, we can't control what a house looks like. But each lot has to have a, two parking spots on the property. Paid, paid parking spots.
That's one of the things that, that is brought up in the design review committee and, and it will be a requirement in the criteria for that subdivision.
Correct. That, that would be one site plan review when we go through, just as a tree for a lot and sidewalks, that kind of stuff.
Sean, what's the minimum lot size in R0?
I think it's four thousand. So it's a little, four thousand. We'll look it up real quick.
While we're waiting, Mr. Foster?
Mr. Penny?
Mr. Penny? Yes?
Uh, what is the minimum size house you're going to put on a four thousand square foot lot?
Probably the minimum would be nine fifty. Is that what you're talking about, square footage? Yes, sir. We're going to try to stay around eleven, twelve hundred square feet.
Can we?
I guarantee you, we're not going to build any six hundred square foot homes because land cost, you got to build a bigger house to get your money back.
Sean, can, you say we cannot put restrictions on a rezoning?
Not, not on a rezoning. The, the numbers they're throwing out are the minimums. So, so it doesn't say that lot has to be four thousand.
Right, 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 exactly.
It's going to be a minimum, same thing as a minimum.
What the issue is here is what is, what, what the expectation and meeting that expectation? So, uh. Nine hundred and fifty is a pretty small little house, but, um.
Let's sit down as quick as possible.
I grew up in a lot smaller.
If they're not selling, I would guess they would come back in to, you know, rezone it or make bigger lots or something. But, you know, that's, that's the option that they're proposing. Right now, it's own single family, so it, it can be houses right now.
Okay. Four thousand square foot lot then. Okay.
May I have your attention, please? Thank you. Ms. Chambers?
There are a lot of nine hundred square foot houses around the city. They're everywhere. You don't notice them, but they are everywhere. It's not an unusual house size. Many of the areas you drive through have nine hundred square foot houses. I know they are in Argenta. You wouldn't think it, but they are there. Little tiny houses. They don't allot nicely. They make a nice neighborhood. A good family lives there. It's not the end of the world to have a nine hundred square foot house. So, you know, a six hundred square foot house is about three parking places. So no, he's not build, he's saying he's not building tiny houses. He's going to at least hit the nine hundred and fifty square foot minimum. And the market's going to drive what he does. So if nine hundred square foot houses are not selling, I'm sure he will go on up to twelve hundred to get that extra bedroom or that extra bathroom in there to have a product that sells. So he's not here to destroy someone's neighborhood or destroy, he's merely trying to develop a piece of land and further contribute to the tax base of the city. So I'm neither for nor against what he's trying to do, but there's really no need to panic because what he's offering to build is what's here already. Okay? It's everywhere.
White?
One, one last question. Mr. Penny? Mr. Penny?
Yes?
About what price range houses would these range from, and I'm not going to hold you to it, just kind of give the people.
I'm sorry, I'm old and dead.
I'm sorry. What price range house, low to high roughly?
We're, we're looking, we have a commercial bank, a community bank, just a gentleman back here, and they're wanting to do the permanent financing. And they're saying we need to stay a hundred thousand to a hundred and thirty thousand.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Wallace, did you have a question? Okay. Any other comments?
I have, I have something. Janice Starkey. My parents' home is fifty sixteen Parker. That's where the Fifty First Street turns into Parker Street. My question, okay, I understand the nine hundred square foot house. Matter of fact, I lived in one on Parker Street. And I hope that doesn't include the garage.
I hope so, too.
Because if it does, there's no room. And a nine hundred square foot house is one bathroom, two bedrooms, and it's a four-room house, really. That's all it is. They can charge a hundred thousand or do whatever they want to. I'm just telling you, I've lived there. I know what it's like. One of the problems we have, you know, we were sent a letter from the title company to let us know that this meeting was going on. And I was one of the people that called, probably Mr. Spencer, just asking because I didn't understand all this myself. But after y'all approve this, then we may never hear anything again until all this building's going on and all these houses are butted up against each other. And surely the city will be cautious because of the problem on Parker Street. So much of the water from the top of the hill goes down and it would go to forty nine fifteen Parker. And it's just almost works that yard away. So there's, there's a lot of problems that some construction up there could cause people that live further down on Parker Street that may not have received this letter.
Ma'am, may I address your question right quick?
Yes, please.
Sean, any new development will have to comply with detention requirements?
Correct. When we review this through this, the plat.
Right.
They will have to propose something to the city engineer and get approval from city engineer that they cannot make it worse.
Right.
So typically, this probably will improve the situation out there because the owner of this property will have to contain it and get it to.
To tell you, what he just said is that the amount of water coming off the property now cannot be increased. Okay? So whether they did any clearing or not, we're probably going to go back before clearing and calculate how much water actually came off. So they cannot, through their improvement, increase the amount of water coming off the land. Further, if the city engineer asks that they actually install detention ponds and such as opposed to accepting an in lieu fee contribution, he can actually ask us to require detention as opposed to allowing the developer to pay in lieu of building detention. So.
Well, it was the probably part that I had a problem with.
The what?
Said they probably, he said they will probably. About the water drainage, they will, they will probably.
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. Not probably.
Yes, sir. That's what he said.
That's what he said.
Exactly what he said.
And the way I said.
Before the city engineers department for review before a permit ever gets issued. Yes, ma'am. Yeah.
Let me ask, let me address one of the things you said. You were kind of concerned about you guys never seeing this again. That's, that's not true at all. I thought, I understood you saying you were afraid this was be the last time you would see it again.
What I'm saying is, we were all made aware of this meeting because of this.
Right, right, right.
The only way, it's my understanding from Mr. Spencer's office, that we'll just have to check the docket to see when it comes up again. It's not like we're going to be told in advance, hey, you need to come up here because the planning commission is going to, they're going to present the plat and all this. And so it won't be like we will have a say. So this is the only opportunity this group of people have something to say.
Is that true, Mr. Spencer?
This, this still has to go to city council for the mayor and all council members to vote on it.
What I understood, the conversation here is, after this process, and if it's approved, you will have to come back through the development committee. That will make, that committee will make a recommendation and be heard, that recommendation be heard back at this committee again.
That's correct.
Then after that, and, and then again, what notification will they have of that?
There, there's not notification for a plat. And anywhere in the city, there's no notification.
Then it goes to city council again, right?
The plat will, you have the final stage.
Okay.
We will have any, we will not know anything unless someone stays on top of this and sees what's on the docket. And that's just, that's a problem for us to not know all the information that's going on.
Mr. White?
First of all, it has to go through city council. So most likely, the next city council meeting, if, if we approve or disapprove, it can still go to the city council, number one. Number two, if this is this important to you, and if it was that important to me, I would have someone out there watching the docket. And that person would be in charge and, if it's that important. If it's not that important, then that's right. You're not, you're not going to find out.
Someone's going to have to do that.
I know, but we all have to do that. That's just life.
Is it?
That's just, that is. That's just life. You have to keep up with it because all this junk technology now. No one wants to send a letter anymore, but, but that's not the point because I'm not a technology person. But someone has to keep up with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
One more, please. One more, please.
My name is Bonnie Berenz.
Yes, ma'am.
That was my daughter. When we, we've lived there sixty-three years. The street of forty, Fifty, Forty-nine fifteen is the little house she was talking about. But Forty-Ninth Street and Fifth Street, the house across the street was a pond before they put that house there. And that water will drain from up the hill and spill over into that yard. And you've got to look at, and your street work on Fifty First Street, there's a valley that begins that pond. How are you going to make a street through there?
Ma'am, that will be up to the developer and the city engineer.
Are they going to afford it? It took five years before we could get a street paved on, on Parker Street.
Yes, ma'am, but that's not the issue before us today.
It was the last to get paved in that area. And the man that came to Black Topit, he says, it wasn't on our agenda to do this. How did you get this done? Well, it was helped from an alterman at that time to do it. And so you, you've got a lot of your, uh, street work and that stream goes down that hill. Just if it was stopped up, it'd make a good sliding place when it froze.
Thank you, ma'am. You're the last speaker. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Clifton. I know you've seen my hand be raised multiple times and I just finally had to jump up. I'd like to address this committee. Thank you for listening to me. I have a slew of questions. And, and I'm just, if you don't mind, I'm nervous, so bear with me. I, I've jotted them down. And if you don't mind. First of all, I, I was never notified of this meeting. My neighbors were. I lived directly next door to them. I'd, I'd like to know, my first question is, which area exactly, is there a picture you can put up there of what this area is entailing? Supposedly, I'm outside of two hundred feet of the area that's going to be affected. I'm sorry. I apologize. I don't even think I said my name. I'm Tracy Gray and I live at thirteen seventeen Cody Place. I read the rules and didn't say my name and address. I'm sorry. I never got a letter. I called and I was told that I was outside of the two hundred foot parameter. And yet, the whole behind my backyard has been cleared. It's ten feet behind my fence. So I have some concerns about why was I never notified of any of this? I had to hear it from neighbors. And so I'm here today as an interested party because I never received a letter. The questions I had is, will we be informed of future developments, me, because it directly affects me and my backyard?
Let's, let's try to answer your questions as we go. Mr. White just explained to the lady here before, this is going to go to the city council.
Yes.
And if it gets approved there, then there's a process that the developer will have to go through, come back to the design review committee, will come back to this committee here again.
Okay.
If it gets passed through this committee, then it will not go back to the city council. It will be up to your responsibility to watch the progress of it, to see if it goes forward.
Will it be the same number, the twenty ten dash whatever? Is that the number I'm looking for?
That's a rezoning case number.
Is that what I'm looking for on the docket?
You'll be looking at the design review committee meeting. Is that correct, Mr. Spencer?
What will it be called exactly, please?
We're not at that point yet. They have to submit something to get assigned something.
Okay.
This will not, anything be done until it goes before the city council and gets approved or disapproved.
Okay. Well, I guess I'll just, should I call you, Mr. Spencer, to find out what it would be called on the docket?
Welcome to, but about ten days before every planning commission, it's, everything's on the website.
Okay.
You're welcome to call, but usually about ten days, we try to get it up on the, on the website and you can check there at your leisure to do it.
All right.
You're welcome to call either. So I mean, either, either one.
Okay. My other question was, we asked him how many homes they were looking into and I never heard that answer. Did you all hear how many homes exactly?
Mr. Penny, she's asking how many homes you're proposing to build there? And. No, sir, this time I can't tell you exactly how many because the steepness on the back, we may not build on it at all. But I'm going to say probably forty to fifty. We're going to build like fifteen to begin with. We're going to run Fifty Second Street through.
Excuse us, folks. Go ahead. I'm sorry for that.
I say we're just going to build the Fifty Second Street through first and tie Division into it. We have to curb and gutter all that and we will see how that goes. Okay. Does that answer your question, Ms. Gray?
Much better. I had no idea.
Thank you.
And my other question is, have they, would the EPA effects of building these homes, would that be part of the city council planning? The roads, the sewage, how all that's going to be affected by now, all of the traffic that would be up there?
Would, would not, you asked a bunch of questions there. At that point, that does not go to city council. So the city engineer will be approving everything, the roads and streets and everything, based on Mr. Penny's engineer meeting with them and that kind of stuff.
Okay, so all of the environmental impacts would be addressed at that time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. And I'm just, I'm not sure, and I really am seeking your opinion on this because I had to do my own homework to learn what a zero lot line was and so on. I don't know. I would be curious to know and I would trust all of your opinions. If you had a zero lot line subdivision rezoning coming to your neighborhood, would you be for or against it and why, or why not? And I thank you for your time.
That's a, a, a question that's hypothetical, so we're not dealing with that here today. Thank you. Mr. Chambers, do you have a?
Yes, Sean.
Yes, Sean, is, is this a representation, a suggestion, a concept plan for the subdivisions?
Yeah, that, we require a, a simple drawing, so this, this is not, this is here for reference, so that's not held to it.
I'm not saying this, I'm just showing, this drawing shows a yield of fifty-eight lots, okay?
Yep.
So I just want to, to, I know this is just a concept plan, it's not what he'll be submitting on the, to divi, to development review. But to clarify, the only notice of public hearing is for rezoning. When the plat is submitted, I don't, Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, a plat does not require public notice. So it'd be important to have someone in your group assigned to at least call Sean and say, you know, when is, you know, is this on the docket? Is the penny property up for consideration? Has it been, a plat been filed, is the, is the question? And he'll tell you, yes or no, plat has not been filed, yes it has. And what is the date of? But yeah, about ten days before the planning commission.
Ms. Pulasko?
I just wanna make myself aware and make sure that I understand. The way this property is zoned today is portions of it are one and portions of it are three.
Yes.
Apartments can go into R-three, correct?
Correct.
If we've.
No.
No. So that's R-four?
R-four and five, yes.
All right, so duplexes?
R-three.
R-three is duplexes.
Okay, so multiple units cannot go into an R-three?
If it's different lots, yes.
Okay. All right. Then the R, if we go to the R-zero, which would be the zero lot line, it is going to be basically patio homes. Or that's the way, the new development. And the only other thing I need to make sure I understand, today, all we're dealing with is the rezoning, period.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Second. Question, question's been called, and seconded, please call the roll.
Banks?
Yes.
Pulasko?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Your application did pass, see Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you what to do next.
You really should be ashamed of yourself.
Thank you. Thank you, folks, for coming.
All right, he giving us that look.
What do we do?
Just playing zone. Remember, that's his opinion.
If I could have your attention, please? Would you please step outside? We have some more business we need to discuss in here. Item number seven, to rezone from a TND to a C-six, to allow for residential subdivision with zero front yard setbacks, and to rezone property from R-four to R-three to allow for duplexes located on Rockwater Boulevard. Is the applicant, representing the applicant, go ahead.
I'm Thomas Pallinella, Thomas Engineering, representing the applicant.
Okay. This has not been brought before the design review committee yet, Mr. Spencer?
Yeah.
Okay. Any comments from any?
I'm sorry, that's the one.
It's the one you approved this morning.
That's the one we just approved. Any comments from anyone in the audience? Yes, sir. Give us your name, please.
Oh, yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Anthony Charles, Sr., and I'm one of the property owners that's been, that's in that gated subdivision of Rockwater Boulevard. I don't have a resident at that location just yet, but I, I wanna know how this affects our property values in that gated community.
Okay. Uh, who, Mr. Marla, would you like to?
And who is that? And when did, when did this transformation from a traditional neighborhood, why didn't we as property owners know when this application was put in? Or has there been a change in ownership or something, or what?
This, this is the, the change from traditional neighborhood to standard zoning. This, this meeting is that, so it's currently zoned for traditional neighborhood development. We're considering the zone, rezoning it to C-six, which allows for smaller lots and smaller setbacks. As I understand it from the applicant, this is basically an expansion of the gated community into a more dense community.
Now, does that affect the gated side, or are you talking about the north side of Rockwater Boulevard?
Totally on the north side.
Totally on the north side?
Get him a map, please. Oh, he, he's gonna give you a map to show you.
Okay.
Piece of property.
Tell me your address again.
Uh, it's lot, what is it, lot nine? I own lot nine.
Ten and eleven.
Ten and eleven.
On which street?
Rockwater Boulevard. I'm on the south side, between the river. I'm on the, the river, and then that gated section right there, where.
Do you have a street address of your property?
I have a property.
Do you have a street address for it?
Lot ten.
Lot, okay.
Lot ten is where I am.
We don't, we don't have lot numbers, we only have addresses, so.
Okay. So there's, this part right here. Hey now, wait a minute, where is the circle? Where's the smokestack? Here.
Tim, can he point out his lots that he owns, so you can give us the address?
Here's the river, right? We should be right, and this is the, yeah, we're right there, that's it, right there. Them two.
There's, there's our house on the lot.
Understand.
It's not addressed to you, but it would be approximately fifteen oh seven.
Approximately fifteen oh seven.
Okay, okay, good.
Okay, that's good, that we can understand.
He's on the south, he's on the south side of Rockwater Boulevard.
So I'm on the south side of it. So that's the reason I'm asking, okay? So you're talking about this side?
Yep.
The north side of?
This is the north side, yeah. This is for the north.
Okay, so it won't affect that, my property.
Your property's not changing zoning at all.
Okay. Uh, y'all, bye y'all.
All right, thank you.
Just a thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Charles. Uh, any other comments from anyone in the audience?
I know. Now, these homes that you're planning on putting, are duplexes?
Please speak.
Okay, I was just questioning him about the type of residence that you're planning on putting on that side.
I can address that.
Yes, sir, Mr. Pallinella?
Um, the majority of the homes are single-family residences. There are one, two, three lots we are proposing to be zoned R-three, which does allow duplexes.
Okay, where would those three lots be located?
Those, you see a, on the preliminary plat, you see a private alley on the east side. Those are all, all three lots are east of that alley.
Okay.
And everything west of that alley and north of Rockwater Boulevard is proposed as single-family.
All right. Okay, good.
So you're right here?
Yeah.
That's all single-family?
Mr. Chambers, you got a question?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this, this question's for Jim. Uh, yes, sir, you'll have to come to the microphone.
Please come up, Jim. Mr. Jackson, please come up.
Yes, sir.
Give us your state, your name for the record, please.
Jim Jackson.
Uh, yes, uh, my question is, zoning the property C-six is a commercial zone, okay? Uh, I'm personally opposed to rezoning land C-six, even though I understand why we're doing it. And my question is, are there covenants that you have to restrict the commercial side of the zone for C-six? So that what we're doing here, according to the covenants of your subdivision, is strictly residential?
Yes, when we file the bill of assurances with the plat, it will, it will restrict it to residential use.
Okay.
There will not be any commercial use.
I've, I've been advised by Sean that we're trying to create a zone that is like C-six, but it is strictly residential in character, okay? So it allows you the setbacks that you want to have and things like this, but at the same time, it doesn't have the commercial aspect of it. And is that, do you plan to, once again, rezone the entire property to that if it's such an option to relieve, to further reinforce that this is not a commercial property, or do you think the covenants will serve?
No.
Because those expire in twenty years.
No, I think the covenants will, will do it. Uh, I don't, I don't know what the proposed.
I don't either.
Rezone, I don't know what this new thing is, uh, that's being planned, I don't know how that'll work, and, but we're, our plan is for this to be residential, single-family residential.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
And we'll file the bill of assurances with that.
Thanks.
Mr. White?
Mr. Jackson, I just gotta ask, why this nice area you're gonna put three duplexes in? Why would you do that?
I think these, I mean, there's good-looking duplexes out there, uh, and, and where it fits up against Division Street, uh, it will fit in.
I just, I just against duplexes.
Pardon?
I said, I'm just not a big fan of duplexes in a new, new area like you're doing. It just doesn't make sense to me.
I mean, three of the lots out of the, I believe, forty that we have, we, and we're gonna see what the market says about whether we're, we're gonna do one on Fourth and Division, and see how that one, how that one goes.
But what you're not telling me is, if we do well on these three, all of a sudden, we're not gonna have this whole neighborhood of duplexes.
I don't think we can do that, I think it's only, um.
Okay.
I think we're only doing three, three lots.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. White, the property is owned R-four, so they can do a duplex on it right now.
Right now.
So, so they're trying to restrict, take the apartment part out of it to do duplex, but they are allowed right now to do a duplex.
Any other comments from anyone in the audience? Any other comments from any of the commissioners? Ms. Pulasko? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Peterson, call the roll, please.
Banks?
Yes.
Pulasko?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Your application did pass. See Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you what to do next.
Thank you.
Next order of business is a presentation from our city engineer. Before he begins. Mr. Chambers?
Yes, sir, I have one, one quick question for you, on the issue of the Butch Penny rezoning. I wasn't gonna get you involved in that, but I was gonna reserve my question.
I went outside and visited with them.
Okay. But they, they were saying they cleared the property, and that the city engineer went out there, didn't know if you stopped them or made them put up silt fences, or?
Did.
Okay, so they're, they're now legal in terms of their clearing?
Right, yes. Clear, you know, they were only clearing their, their property, and, you know, they didn't have a stormwater permit for doing that.
Right.
And they didn't tell the city that they were doing, we found out after, after the fact.
But they're all legal now, they've got their silt fences up, they're not causing any more runoff, or, and the last thing we need's a big six-inch rain.
Right. I haven't, I haven't heard anything, I'll have our stormwater inspector go out there and check it again.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Banks?
Now, did they remove all the trees?
No, not all the trees, some of them, they did, and, and a lot of the brush and things like that.
But Mr. Banks, with the, with the intensity of that development, there won't be many trees left, because of the, the density of the development.
Are we talking about where the apartment's going? There are no trees on that hill.
Oh, the penny, the penny property.
Penny property.
The property that, that goes down North Hills?
No, no, no.
Oh, we're talking about a different property.
No, we hadn't got, Miss, right, we hadn't gotten to the presentation, he was asking.
We're not on the presentation, I was just asking about the previous application.
Sorry, I'm, I'm.
Okay, Mr. Wilburn, it's all yours.
So, I'm gonna begin by, because I wasn't at the last meeting, Sean made a request to me to, to have a discussion about the development, the point at Nor, at North Hills. And Commissioner White, would you give me your?
Yeah, and then let me.
I, I heard you did a lot of talking.
I did, it was me.
And, and let, let me know what your main points are, if you don't mind.
All right, here's, here's my main points, is, is number one, and this is just what I've been told, this, this apartment complex, it's gonna be done in three stages?
Uh, I, I know, multiple phases. I know that the plan right now is to only do one phase.
In my understanding, if they do that one phase, and then find out there's not a market, then they may not do a second or third phase. And my problem is, is number one, why did we let them clear all three phases when they only told us they're gonna do one? And the reason I'm getting this, I live in Lakewood, and, and I'm getting a bunch of calls on this, and they're thinking that I approved this and it wasn't zoned, and so, so I, at the same time, drive by it at least probably once every day or two, and not only did they do their land, but they don't own the whole land to, to the North Hills, do they not? Because that's kind of a wetland area, they don't own that, do they? Where they're putting the big pipe and the road.
Right here, yes, sir.
Right, I, I'll address all that, that's why I got you this packet, but, go on.
Yeah, I got it. And then, and then my next question is, I've, I've lived in North Rock for, for sixty-four years now, in Lakewood, all but basically three, you know, I've, except for going to school. And I've lived there when, down by Verizon, every time it rained, it flooded. And now we got the Redwood Tunnel, but the Redwood Tunnel, between Lakewood and between the interstate and between now what we've done, I don't see it, because when it rains, a couple inches now, that road gets real close to going over North Hills or, or at by Waterside where it comes out. And I've noticed they cleared out all that, the brush and underneath brush, so they can see, which I don't think they should have been allowed to do that, number one, and they also cut down some trees, and they also ran a ditch. And my, my understanding of the rule is, you can, you can't cut, if you don't own the land, especially, you can't cut certain-sized trees this close to a creek or a river or whatever. And it looks like we've allowed them to just go in there and just go, throw a bomb on top of the hill, and then everything around it, clear it out, is what I must say. And then my last question is, I don't know where all that water's gonna go, because have all this water, and I'm not sure, but Redwood Tunnel, it's big, but it gets full a lot.
Right.
And backs up right there. So that was my other question is, when north sides, North Hills is underwater, what are we gonna do? Because there's nothing we can do.
Right, so...
Well, that's my main question.
Okay. So what I wanted to do, I kinda knew that's what you wanted, but what I wanted to do and, and the reason, we're gonna go through my packet here.
Okay.
And it hopefully will answer all your questions by just, just really reviewing with y'all what the, what the process is that we go through. So, so this project was approved by the planning commission as far, so it was approved, the site plan development, the fact that it meets the zoning ordinances in subdivision for development was approved in, I believe, August of two thousand and sixteen. So it's almost two years ago that the planning commission approved it, all right? I believe that, I don't know the exact start of construction, but I do know that the engineer for the project is White Daters, the developer is Keith Richardson, he is a high-end developer. I will say lots of experience. And they went through a process meeting our checklist, our, our requirements through the planning division. It probably took them, I think, about a year and a half to get through it.
Okay.
So, the, the land that he is building on or developing on is his land, okay? All of it.
Yeah, all the way to North Hills?
The land he is constructing on is his property.
Okay.
Now, within that property, he had to get what's called a Corps of Engineers 404 permit. That took him a good portion of a year plus. And what that was is, there are, what you said, there are wetlands that he impacted, okay? So, the, he, the development did a lot to minimize the amount of wetlands that they touched, but all of that was mitigated through mitigation by following the Corps of Engineers procedures and all that. And he definitely, before he started construction, which was a requirement of the city, he got his 404. The other thing he got was a section 401 water certification because they are taking the land and, and filling in some areas as you indicated, and they're actually dredging or, or taking material away. So he had to go through that process through ADEQ. He had to go through, because this is a large development, over five acres, he had to have a ADEQ stormwater permit, he had to have a short-term activity authorization for filling in the ditches and all that kind of stuff. And I will tell you that the construction is being done by a high-end contractor named George, and y'all probably have heard of them, do a lot of work for the highway department. And so the land is, you know, not only has it been cleared, but the land is actually taken a different shape. There is no borrow material needed for this project. They are blasting and moving materials around, balance, it's all balanced. And I will tell you that the slopes on the hillside, you know, our hillside regulations jump in when grades are greater than four to one, steeper than four to one. There are no grades on, on this particular hillside that will be less than five to one, which is not terribly steep, but there's lots of areas there, six to one, twelve to one. So right now, what they're doing is the rough grading, they're about sixty-five percent done. If you've seen the construction of the large multi-cell box culvert that's down by their entryway into the facility.
Along North Hills.
Yeah. That has got a lot to do about addressing the water that's coming in. If you notice how, if you've been out there, the size of that box culvert is substantial. So I wanna thumb through real quick.
One, one quick question before you bend.
Sure.
They, they have onsite detention?
Yes.
It's underground detention?
No, it's not underground, it, it's on the east, on the, I'm sorry, it, it's north of the box culvert area, okay?
But they are detaining, they're detaining all their water.
So, yeah, there is detention taken in place. So, so on the first couple of things, I would, at y'all's leisure, read, read items two and three, that was the main requirements by engineering. There's whole hosted list by planning and the fire marshal, C A W, wastewater and so to speak, but for, as far as city engineering and stormwater and drainage, the, the items that had to be met were items two and items three mainly. But I wanted to just thumb through, on the next exhibit, I wanted to give y'all an idea of what was going on in terms of the impact of this development to the overall drainage basin. So I thought I'd show y'all a drainage map that shows how large Dark Hollow is. Dark Hollow is the drainage basin we're in here. And if you look at the words Dark Hollow and just above Hollow, you'll see the interstate and the area that's kinda impacted by this project.
Okay.
And, and then you can look at the overall size of the drainage basin.
All of Dark Hollow goes to the Redwood Tunnel?
Yes, sir. Everything, yes, yes, everything that you see outlined in that Dark Hollow drainage basin goes to the Redwood Tunnel. It, it encompasses all the Lakewood lakes and it even encompasses the North Little Rock High School and that area where it goes underneath the interstate. So going on to the next page, I thought y'all would be interested in kind seeing this, that the, this is just showing where the development is, but it's showing the drainage that's coming off of the Lakewood Dam, but also y'all should know that there's a decent area north of this project that is, that comes down along North Hills right now, that it covers other subdivision areas. The exhibit after that is just showing you kind of a blow-up view with a topographic map showing what the existing contours were, and that'll become, that's what they started with and what they're changing now. And, and like I said, they're about sixty-five percent done. They fly this area once a month and they do LiDAR contours, so when they say they're sixty-five percent done, they're, it's fairly accurate, they overlay.
Chris, what is the blue squiggly lines we see?
That, that is like a, a ditch or drainage channel.
What?
Like a drainage channel, the ditch.
Okay.
You can see, you know, your property up there, coming off of Lakewood Dam, you see how it comes around and it goes underneath? That's that ditch that's right by your property.
Got it.
The next exhibit is a, shows FEMA overlay boundaries, and that's what they did impact. I will say that this area is a Zone AH, which basically means this area is subject to one to three feet of flooding for the hundred-year, for a given event, for a hundred-year storm.
Talking about shaded blue area?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And it also is, is an area that I would say that FEMA did not, you know, they didn't do a detailed hydraulic study to set those limits. Again, this is, look at your leisure, the next exhibit shows what the final rough grading of the site is gonna be and showing that, that the slopes, none of them even approached four to one. So in terms of that, should be very stable.
That was a big question that was asked.
Yeah. It's gonna be, I was up there today to just look at and visit with them. It's, I would invite y'all to go up there, it, it, it's very flat. And one of the things from stormwater, and Don said it multiple, multiple times, the goal of the design on a development like this is not to increase the water that is coming off this site anymore than when it was all wooded. And one of the things that helped this developer in, in his calculations is that the hillside existing was quite a bit steeper than what he's ending up with. So it's basically your hillside's steeper, but it's rougher, now it's flatter, gonna be flatter and smoother. So he still required quite a bit of detention, but he was able to do it upstream, and the reason that box culvert is the size that it is, is it's not only size to be able to handle all the water that's on the subdivisions north of this project, but it, it's, that size to handle his stormwater coming off, and it actually detains the water in a hundred year storm event, not to let it overtop North Hills, but it detains it so it shouldn't feed in anymore, so when the water coming from the lakes tie into the water coming from their development, it will not be more than what it was when it wasn't developed at all.
Chris, what method is he using for detaining?
Hmm?
What method is he using to detain water?
The hold of the box, the sizing of the box culvert and holding the water back.
Oh, he's detaining water north of the box culvert, that's his detention.
Exactly.
Okay.
In, in that, in that area that's, in that area that's wooded and...
And he brushed out, he's detaining water there.
Yes, sir.
Got it.
That, that's the goal and the concept and that's how they did their calculations. But if you were to compare, if you were to overlay like that second sheet I showed you where, where, all right, let's see, the third sheet that shows the FEMA stuff, where it shows the ditches and all that, if you were to overlay his development, he's really not impacting those drainage channels coming down from the north very much. He stayed to the, the engineer, White Dater, stayed to the east of that.
Does he stay?
So, so the last thing I said, I, I, and I'm willing to visit with y'all about any of this, but I, I gave you a few excerpts from the final plans that were submitted that show all the drainage, but basically the drainage for the whole property is being drained to the north and to the west, to the north side of that, that box culvert is the bulk of the drainage. There is a little bit of drainage that ties in from the development that's on the south side, that's south of the box, but it's not a great deal. And then there's one very slight drainage that goes off to the southeast.
Of his home?
We actually are collecting some of the water from over near the interstate area and taking it.
So he's actually staying east of the sanitary sewer line? This project basically stays east of that, so anything west of that will remain swamp, so to speak.
Yeah, in the, in the entrance, there, there, there's a lot of engineering, a lot of study, a lot, a lot of talking about where the entrance was. You know, a lot of people wanted the entrance to be across from Waterside.
That, that was the next last question.
I know, I've heard that too. And there's, there's, I'd love to sit down and explain it to, to you, but there is a, we did a warrant, we did a traffic study, we did counts, the city did counts, Ernie Peters did a traffic study, and it certainly has warranted a signal at full development. Now, the developer is gonna build the signal during this phase one. We may not, I don't want, I don't like to operate, I don't wanna start operating a signal unless it's needed. So until they build up enough in the apartments to where they really need the signal, we don't wanna operate that signal. That's typical design, that's typical procedures by the highway department. They do what's called a warrant study. So what the, what this traffic study shows is that it may not warrant for this first phase that's going in, but it...
Which is how many units?
I think it's three, is it five? First unit I thought was about three sixty.
Okay. So they'll be able to turn left there as well coming out?
Yeah.
Well, see, that's, that's where the warrant's gonna come in.
Yeah.
It...
Because right, they can't go anywhere.
See, what I'm saying is the signal's gonna be built.
Yeah.
And it's gonna be tested and operated when it, before it even opens. But will we operate that signal? Not necessarily, we may, but we may not based upon the traffic that's coming out of there.
Okay.
Is the signal at North Hills or at the entrance?
It is at the entrance.
Right here.
And not at west, not, not at Waterside. So let me tell you, I'll get, let me tell you, a lot of people wanted that signal, they wanted the entrance to tie directly into Waterside to give them a, a signal. So I will tell you that having the signal there was an impact to the existing box culvert that comes down from the lakes, it impacted additional wetlands, it, the hydraulics of the box culvert, the box culvert was gonna have to be extended and, and its efficiency would not have been as good. And moving it up to where they have it, it's where the old entrance was. And I will tell you what we anticipate as far as the signal goes is, we actually think it may help during the morning, during rush hour, for example, all the southbound traffic is coming. And this is gonna be a very simple controlled inner signal in that it detects cars that are gonna come out of the apartment, say there's two. It will turn red, it will allow those cars to release, but then if no other cars are there, it, it, it gaps out.
So we don't back up North Hills?
Right. We will have it coordinated where North Hills is the main thing that we keep going. What it will do for the folks on Waterside, it may help them actually by briefly stopping the rush hour traffic briefly. It'll give them a chance to make a left coming out of Waterside and easily make rights going, going down. So we, I don't feel like that's gonna hurt. And, you know, we, we, until full development, we are always trying to make our signals a little bit more efficient, we're watching it constantly up at North Hills and McCain. But this signal will be tied in with that signal up there and we'll kinda time it, time them together.
Okay.
So that thing, go ahead.
Just a quick factor, what are the vehicular trips per day generated for an apartment, you know, the apartment complex?
Okay, they did analysis, I, I wish I could, I can't tell you, I don't know that off the top of my head.
It used to be seven vehicular trips a day for a single family, I didn't know if apartments were different, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, there, there's, I can get you...
Okay.
I, I'll get you that information.
Thank you.
And it's part of the traffic study, it's part of the warrant study.
Okay.
I just wanted to question, you know, the other apartment, apartments that are above there?
Mm-hmm.
Are they gonna be able to go through this apartment complex? Are they gonna be blocked?
For this first phase, I think they're blocked.
Good.
I think it only opens that northern entrance on full development, as I recall.
Yeah, if you look at the plan in here, they don't connect at all.
That's...
Yeah.
And if you wanna know, the blasting is, just to add one last thing, the blasting, I think is scheduled to be completed first, first part of August.
I haven't heard of the blast. Yeah, I hear of the trains, but I don't hear of the blast. But I, I appreciate you coming in.
Okay.
So the questions I can answer, you know, to the people that live around me, because they think it's my fault, but I have big shoulders so I can handle it. One of the questions that I just have, the, not the easiest, because I've never seen this before, I've probably voted on it, but it says paper street trees are provided on. Have I ever seen that?
It's, it's been on most of them, so that's on a housing development, right? Is that looking at...
On this one.
It's on the apartment.
And where would those trees be that we're talking about?
They're gonna plant up, up along North Hills, a bunch of them.
Up on North Hills?
So he owns right up to the North Hills, so he has to put a tree of forty feet all the way to the end of his property.
Okay, so he's gonna plant trees on North Hills?
Mm-hmm, yep.
All right, or provide a bond, if he provides a bond, then we take the bond and we plant the trees or is he gonna have to use the trees?
No, we've never had anybody not do something, but the issue is it's bad time to plant trees right now.
Okay.
So, so for me to sign the plat, give me a bond and I'll let you plant them in October.
Okay.
When, when it's better weather.
I read that token wrong, but anyway, I appreciate you coming in, that answers a lot of questions.
No problem.
I'll show them those little check marks, I said we, we did all this, so, you know, they're worried about the water going over the road there at Waterside, you know, because it gets placed now.
Yeah.
Is there any plans for the city now, now that we're this far? Because now that Lakewood's got number one total fixed hopefully, now they got the water so it's not going this way, coming this way behind your property in Lakewood, to, to either redo that bridge or clean that bridge out underneath? Because right now, when we have rain, it's, everything catches right there and then states it builds.
Right.
So, so, so there's a, there's a couple of issues. Most of the drainage issues that we're seeing is downstream of this place.
Okay.
Now, the box culvert at North Hills needs to be cleaned out.
Okay.
But the worst area, and it, and we have surveyed it and we know about it, but it is...
To, to either redo that bridge or clean that bridge out underneath? Because right now, when we have rain, it's, everything catches right there and then it stays there and builds.
So, so, so there's a, there's a couple of issues. Most of the drainage issues that we're seeing is downstream of this place. Now, the box culvert at North Hills needs to be cleaned out. But, the worst area, and it, and we have surveyed it and we know about it, but it is where, and I gave you one of the exhibit that shows the overall drainage of the area. You notice how it all ties together and goes under the tracks at Union Pacific. That is...
That's the back.
It, it, now, if you think about it, it backs up from that point. We, we've surveyed it, but it's almost impossible for, we have not been successful at UP either cleaning out underneath their bridge or allowing us to clean out their, underneath their bridge.
Is that why all the land south of the interstate, along North, sides of North Hills floods?
It's a contributing factor, very much so. But, sometimes I've thought that if we're holding the water back at the railroads, it, we're actually letting the Redwood Tunnel drain a little bit. You know, we're almost detaining the water behind the, you always, one of the things you always have to, in design, one of the things you always have to be worried about is when you go and improve a area where you let more water flow through, one of the things you always have to look at is, what are you doing to the people downstream to you? Like, our DOT's got a, a project going on right now in design up on Camp Robinson, on the drainage sticks that runs along Camp Robinson. They're looking at doing improvements of the box culvert at Camp Robinson and we're looking at maybe working with them on a joint venture there because part of it's in, in our city and part of it's on their right-of-way. But, they are making, they're proposing to make significant improvements to how much water, because their calculations show that Camp Robinson overtops. And they would prefer Camp Robinson, not the overtop. And where it stands right now is, what's it do? Okay, so you're going to let all the water get through, go, go on through?
Who's next?
Who, who's, who's downstream? And we have some problem areas, so we have a drainage project that we're trying to implement for the sales tax that was passed to help drainage on down south of that point. But, yeah, that's how, how that kind of stuff.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
Okay.
We'll move into public comment and then adjournment. And while we're at public comment, Chris, I have a question for you.
He almost made it.
I was trying to get out now.
On Skyline Drive, recently, the contractor, I, I don't know what the work was done, but they went down the middle of the street, dug down and I don't know whether they worked on the drainage sewer, water, what. But, it's right west of Magnolia, in the hollow there where you go up the hill, in about the 500 block of Skyline Drive. The contractors cut about four foot wide and about hundred foot long. They repaired whatever they did, they came back in and patched asphalt back over.
At multiple places?
Yes, well, this one, one in particular, is one long patch. But, it just looks and feels like...
Is that the one on Cherry Hill?
Yes, sir.
Yes, that, that was, okay.
Okay.
That's North Little Rock wastewater.
My question is, is there not some kind of way in the street department that they can help, be held to a standard to repair what they fix? That is just like they dumped it out of the truck and use a, a packer and pack it down. It gets terrible.
So, so I will tell you that, that patch is substandard.
Yes, sir.
Kenny, Kenny is our, he, he's over utility cuts done by utilities. It was actually done by us because it's North Little Rock wastewater. But, I have that street, if it's the area that I'm talking about, the cut down the middle of the street, that area is, I've got it scheduled to be overlaid. And Debbie and Beth are, and the people in the area are, are aware of it and wastewater may be assisting in the cost of the milling. And, so, but I will, I want everybody to know, y'all all live in different wards and things like that. North Little Rock wastewater is under a consent administrative order to improve their system. This is in the years and making. But, they, they do this process where they're replacing millions of dollars worth of work. And they're, some of their subcontractors, it's Horseshoe is one of their main contractors. And they're doing millions and millions. But, they do this process called pipe bursting, where they are taking a pipe and they're replacing the old pipe by just forcing it through. Once you do that, say they do that in, in the lines in the middle of the street, well, when they replace the pipe by bursting it, all the services to all the houses along that block have to be tied in. And that's what you're seeing when you see pipe bursting, obviously, and you see a patch, a patch, a patch, a patch. And we have been working with them for a half a year. We think we have good final condition repairs, which I can show you, but is a struggle for their temporary repairs.
Yeah, very good.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments, Ms. Pulaski?
This is a comment that I don't know anybody to say it to, but you. The house on Seventh Street that has been vacant forever, that has the broken window that's making me nuts. Is there nothing the city or the...
The house is in the historic district.
Exactly.
And will never be allowed to be torn down.
Well, why can't they make them fix that window?
Well, that would be code enforcement, but, but the, the person that has the house for sale has mortgaged it so many times to a bank, he owes so much money on it. There have been people begging to buy that house.
But, they can't.
I cannot tell you how many runs have been made at that house.
I've heard the same thing.
And, you know, the saddest vote of my entire career was the, the CDC selling that house to someone in the Air Force who swore they were going to do a brilliant job and renovate it.
Oh, it looks good, except for that window.
In six months, but they, they decided to do it and they messed it up so badly. I apologize.
Mr. Phillips?
Since Chris don't want to leave, I've got a question for him. These guys that's doing all this work in the streets and sewers and whatever they're doing, they dump this gravel in big piles all over the city and then they use a backhoe to go back and get the gravel and they run down the streets losing all that gravel out of backhoe buckets. Can the city not do something about this? I mean, you've got gravel and I don't know if y'all have noticed it or not, but it's terrible, all over.
Oh, it tears up the road.
Is, is it the, is it the pipe bursting project, you think? Or is it another type of utility?
Hold on, but it's a green backhoe, the only thing I can tell you, it's a green backhoe.
Well, they're, they're using the gravel to bed a pipe, so I imagine it's probably water wastewater.
Well, they've changed their specs, they're using flowable fill right now for wastewater. But, gravel is, I mean, our sea ballast is used by CAW.
Yeah.
So, first thing we have to know is, if you'll pop me an email on where this is happening.
All over the city, where the... Sunset Drive, Remount Road, Camp Robinson Road, Pike Avenue, all of that area over there.
Okay.
I'll tell you this much, they don't like to listen to citizens. They were on Sunset Drive, they had that trailer and that backhoe in the street on the hill. You come up the hill and you're right there on it. So, my husband walked down there and told them to come up and put it in the alley right by our house. And I looked at him and told him to get out of there.
Now, all these, I will tell you, all these utilities that are doing work?
Well, it's the whole, it was the sewer, Horseshoe.
Okay. Horseshoe is the, one of their sub...
And they, and...
Or, it could have been in-house people.
No, it was contract.
Okay.
And Kenny?
Yes.
He evidently needs to be king because you get him involved and we have little ninety-four-year-old neighbor ladies with holes in their yard. And man, they got back out there and it is fixed. And it is fixed right.
Kenny is doing a really good job, but it's a hard job to keep up with.
Well, Steve Baxter got in behind it and then Steve got Kenny in.
Oh, so now I know where you're talking about.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, I, I'm aware of that.
I, I told Johnny, I said, I don't know why you even talked to him, and they told him to get out of the way.
Any other public comment?
Second.
Most amazing, second all the favor, I? Coz, thank you all.
I got to go. This is long meat. Why, why'd you do this?